All right, we're ready to go. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October 13th work session of the Stafford County School Board. I would like each board member to go around and introduce themselves and their district as our roll call. Oops, sorry, everybody. We'll start here.
Patricia Healy, Rock Hill District.
Susan Randall, George Washington District.
Holly Hazard, Hartwood.
Pamela Young, Garrisonville District.
Elizabeth Warner, Griffiths-Widewater District.
Sarah Chase-Falmouth.
All right, we do have a quorum at this time. I would ask if there is a motion to approve the agenda for our work session.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second, all right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, hearing none, agenda is approved. This evening, our sole topic is our transportation audit, which has been under discussion and we are ready to go. I don't know, Dr. Kizner, do you want to do an introduction or let whomever do the introduction?
Yeah, I'm never shy. Tom, let me introduce to Tom Platt. He completed his work a while ago, but it was remarkably impressive, very detailed, and this is an opportunity to hear some recommendations, and I do believe it has some logistics and budgetary implications. Welcome.
Great, thank you.
And sir, before you get started, I would just like to recognize that Mr. Suddath is here with us this evening, who I know gets up very, very early, and I'd just like to thank him for his service certainly throughout this school year and every school year, but transportation is always, and I know that you were part of this discussion with the consultant, as I understand, but I just want to say, I'm sure on behalf of the board, thank you for everything, and I'm sorry about the loss in your family recently. Go ahead, thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. It's been a long road and an interesting year since we started this work, so I appreciate that we have this opportunity to hopefully move some of this agenda forward. Let me begin, I know we don't have a lot of time this evening, and we have a lot of ground to cover, but let me just begin, if I can, and tell you a little bit about myself and the company. Decision Support Group is aspirational. It's really a very small company, myself and my partner. We've been at this exact kind of work, providing advisory services focused on pupil transportation for over two decades. Got back into the business of providing these services directly, and we really enjoy working with our colleagues like Barry and working with all of you, and hopefully we can provide some good advice to help move your transportation system forward. All right, let's see if this works. Excellent. So let me begin, just to give you a quick, quick historical background. So we began this project almost a year ago, almost exactly a year ago, this month of 2019. We were asked to come in and take a look at the system following what was admittedly a challenging school startup in 2019. We came in and did a lot of discovery and assessment work, October to December of 2019, and in January, we began the first of what is now four deliverables for the project, where we sat down and went through our assessment of the operation with Barry and his staff, just to make sure that we were heading in the right direction and not misinterpreting anything that we saw. In February, we sat down with the superintendent and covered the same content with the addition of some bell time assessment, and then in March, we delivered what we call a decision brief, which is a forward-focused document that described the recommendations and the specifics for the decisions that need to be made in order to move forward. Then we had this little thing called the global pandemic shut us all down. Flash forward six or seven months, and here we are. So for today, our goal is to sort of refresh, re-energize, and hopefully start moving the agenda forward. Specifically today, this is in three parts. Again, I understand our time is short. I have a lot of content here, I promise I will touch on every slide, but I will focus on the things that I think are most important for you to hear this evening, but if you see anything, or if you want to step in and ask any questions along the way, please do so. So the focus will primarily be on the front end and the back end. I want to start and talk just sort of thematically with the overall findings that we saw and the recommendations that come from those findings, and then on the back end, I want to conclude this evening with focusing on the decisions that need to be made to really move forward and make changes to the system.
If I could just ask board members, if you all could just write your questions, let's let the speaker get through.
that I think are of most importance for you to understand, touching on all of the rest, but we can always go back and cover any questions that you have on those as we go. There we go, that's better. Okay, so let's begin with a series of four slides, two that cover our findings and two that cover our overall recommendations. The findings are in four parts, and where I want to begin is this notion of evolutionary growth and its implications. Really, this is fundamental to what we've been seeing in the transportation system here in Stafford. Stafford County Schools in Stafford County, as we all know, is not the same as it was 20 and 25 years ago, and just like the frog in the pot of boiling water, things tend to accumulate over time without noticing the subtle changes that were happening year over year, and our overall assessment of the transportation system is that it's really been sort of a victim of that evolutionary change, and a lot of the structure of the system, the way it's organized, the way it's executed, is built for the Stafford County Schools of 20 years ago, not the Stafford County Schools of today. That said, it is absolutely an efficient transportation system by design, and when I speak of efficiency, I am talking about cost-effectiveness, I am talking about value for money. There's no question that as designed, this is a very efficient transportation system, and that's a great starting point for where we're going and what needs to happen going forward, because if I was to stand in front of you and tell you it was inefficient, we would have a much, much bigger hill to climb in order to make some of the changes that we're contemplating here. Efficient does not necessarily imply effective, though. When we think and talk about system effectiveness, what we're referring to is service quality. So it's important that the transportation system transport kids to school safely, efficiently, and on time, and it's in those service quality metrics that things were really suffering at the start of school in 2019. And what you will see as we go through this is that service effectiveness, it was challenged operationally in 2019, but there are fundamental systemic design issues that result in some of the service effectiveness challenges as well. Finally, and this is the pivot to moving forward, simply re-establishing a steady-state operation after the difficult startup in 2019 was simply not going to be enough. What 2019 taught us was that it revealed some of the underlying issues and concerns, and just getting back to a steady state is not going to be enough, because regaining the confidence of the customers, which starts with all of you, and obviously trickles down through the administration, the school building administrators, and the parents and students who use the service, regaining that confidence is going to require some pretty fundamental, in our view, rethinking of how the system is organized and run. So with that, when we move on to the recommendations part of things, the good news again is that this is an efficient system, and it's staffed by professional, highly qualified, and dedicated people. That's a really important and really excellent place to start from. With that, what we're going to be talking about is updating, not reinventing, but updating the infrastructure. And when we talk about infrastructure, we're not talking about buildings and parking lots, we're talking about the policy infrastructure, the technology infrastructure, the organizational Addressing the constraints, this is a big part of where this board steps in, in that what you get in transportation is an outcome of the constraints we place on the system. Transportation service quality and service efficiency is the result of a constrained optimization problem. It's logistics. Defining those constraints is generally outside the control of the people running the transportation operation. Again, it starts with this governing body and extends down through regulation and operating procedures, but it really does start here, and those constraints are some of the key things that we're going to need to address. Thirdly, addressing the culture, and again, just like we talked about infrastructure more broadly than buildings and parking lots, when I'm talking about the culture, I'm talking about the culture of the transportation, excuse me, transportation operation, but the culture of the school division as well, in its relationship to that transportation system. Understanding that all of the stakeholders have a role to play in the success of that operation is a really important point that we're going to reemphasize, and something that through the process of change, we believe can be improved, to understand that the board has a role to play, the administration has a role to play, the buildings have a role to play, all in assistance toward a common objective of a safe, efficient, and effective transportation operation. Okay, so with that, let me pivot and start moving a little bit more quickly through the nuts and bolts of the work that we did. Where we're going to start is talking about growth and change, sort of that first point that I made about some of the thematic findings. I'm going to talk about some of the foundational constraints, that organizational infrastructure that I referred to, and the technology infrastructure. And to start that conversation, I want to begin with this graphic, because I think it's appropriate in terms of baselining everybody's understanding of where we come from, when we look at transportation, transportation's role in the school division. Stafford County Schools is not in the business of transporting students. Stafford County Schools is in the business of educating students. With that said, I think we can all recognize that the transportation system is a key supporting service in being in your ability to provide the educational services. This graphic kind of shows that, and then drills in a little bit to understand what makes the transportation system work, and there's really four parts to it, all of which, well, three at least, that we've referred to already. Policy and governance starts there, design and planning of the system, and obviously you have to have the fleet of buses working and safe and available, and then operate those buses the right way. The 2019 startup issues manifested in operations, but the problems began further up the chain, and that's something that I want to continue to emphasize as we move through the rest of this. So quickly then, when we think of, when we talk about policy infrastructure, we're talking about the entirety of it, from school board policies that set the expectations for the system, down through administrative regulations that interpret those policies, all the way down to the standard operating procedures of the department itself. Fundamentally, that's a foundational building block for success, and fundamentally, we believe that rethinking that policy infrastructure, right from the top all the way down to the bottom, will be an excellent prompt and mechanism for the changes that need to occur in the Systemic change, this again returns to this notion of the system having sort of outgrown itself, for the lack of a better way of describing it. The organization's structure is the same organization's structure that provided services 20 years ago, when the system was much smaller. As a result, through this frog in the pot of water metaphor that I used, some of the organizational responsibilities and lines of reporting are no longer appropriate. Some of the deployment of staff resources, even though the overall staffing is appropriate to the size of the organization, some of that deployment of the resources may not be the best to ensure the most effective operation. Technology, and I'm going to glance back at Barry, because of everything that we've talked about, this is probably the area where we've agreed to disagree a little bit, but I try to tell Barry is, we're really not all that far apart, it's just variations on a theme. From our perspective, you know, technology is here, technology is present, and the customer base demands it, and is going to continue to demand it. Technology adaptation in this system, while much progress has been made, we believe much progress still needs to be made, and can be, along with the policy infrastructure and the organizational changes, can be a real lever for improvement and sustainable change and sustainable high performance into the future. So what does that performance look like today? Very quickly, we'll run through the numbers. This table, I will just tell you, these are some of the common metrics that we try and calculate for every operation that we review, and we do it in a common way that provides a basis of comparison across dissimilar operations, different geographic regions, and different size operations. I will tell you very briefly that these numbers are impressive from an efficiency standpoint. When we look at the capacity utilization of the buses and the cost per student numbers, and the asset utilization, which is how often you use the buses, it's all very, very positive. The only thing I really want you to focus on is the disparity that you see between the regular education and the special education numbers. It is not at all uncommon to see 10x multiples. Special education transportation requires specialized transportation. It's low incidence, low demand type of service, and this is just the way it is. But the reason I'm focusing on it and harping on it a little bit is, it's having a disproportionate impact on your ability to be successful in transportation, and will continue to do so and only get more so over time. These observations about performance drill in a little bit more on some of the things I was just referring to when we were looking at the numbers, that overall efficiency is excellent, but the pressure on the system is clear, and it's that pressure on the system that hiccups with operations ended up causing large concerns during the startup last year, and those are the things that need to be addressed in order to prevent similar occurrences in the future. The second part of what we looked at from a performance perspective, excuse me, are bell times. Let me pause here for a moment, because the reason we looked at bell times is because you just went through some bell time changes and some redistricting, and we wanted to, on the back end, take a look at what the current structure is based on those changes, to see if it's going to work effectively for you going forward. The reason that's so important, if there is one factor that influences transportation efficiency and effectiveness overwhelmingly, and more than anything else, it's school start and end times. It really, that structure really does define how efficient and effective your system can be. It's Barry and his staff's job to make it as efficient and as effective as it can be within the constraints imposed by those bell times. So when we look at this, these are grossly simplified charts, but they're grossly simplified for a reason, because I just wanted to point out to you that this is another mechanism we use to look at in sort of an aggregate way, whether the bell times work from an efficiency and effectiveness standpoint. What you're seeing here on the vertical axis is the number of buses that are actively in operation, carrying students at each of the time intervals across the horizontal axis on the bottom. What you see with the three humps is you see what we call a three-tier system. You have a three-tier system because you have three unique bell time clusters. What you see with the peaks, that's the maximum number of buses that are in use, carrying students at any given time. It doesn't mean it's the maximum number of buses, because other buses are repositioning without students onboard. So when you see the dips between tiers, what you see going on are buses going to their first-tier school, dropping off, repositioning, picking up their next load of students, going to the next tier, and so on to the third. At first glance, this looks like an exceptionally well-balanced, well-designed, and well-executed three-tier system. Why do I say that? I say that because the tiers are balanced in their height. If they were imbalanced, if one tier was significantly higher than the other, let's say it's 200 buses in one and 100 in the next, you still need 200 buses to operate your system, even though you're only using 100 for part of the day, right? The other reason it looks terrific is because you see the clear dips between tiers. So when we first looked at this, we said, this looks great, but as always, the devil is sort of in the detail, right? And it's the hidden constraints that are going on, the things that Barry and his team had to do in order to make these bell times work, which is where the ineffectiveness by design begins to show itself. Okay? What I'm going to do is I'm going to move forward to two slides, forward to this one, where you see, the title is Tier Structure Complexities Visualized. What we did as a means of illustrating those hidden constraints is we pulled three sample bus routes out of the system and displayed them in this Gantt chart format, okay? The reason we did that is because each of the three describes different things that are challenging your system. The first one, it's blue on the screen, I think your copies might be in black and white, shows a bus that is doing a long first-tier run. Now, what do I mean by that? That run is so long that it's unable to do two, the first and the second tier. The reason it's so long is because it's one of these buses that serves specialized programs, right? Fifty, I think the number was 54 of your 210 buses.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, thank you. I was close. Are you, on the first and second tier, are used for these special needs and specialized programs? Those tend to be longer, more extensive, and sometimes are so long that it prevents our ability to use that bus twice for the first and the second tier, right? So even though it's a three-tier system, not all of your buses are able to do three morning and three afternoon runs. The second example, in pink on the screen, right, shows a series of short bus runs, where this bus is actually doing four runs, which at first blush seems like a good thing, right? But what's really happening here is it's doing a short first-tier run, a short second-tier run, it's doing two third-tier runs. It's doing what we think of and call a double run, where it's taking a load of elementary school students in, going back out, and doing another run, serving the same school. So when you think of a service quality perspective on this, you have a load of students who's being dropped off 20 minutes early, so that that bus can go out and double up. These are some of the things that Barry and his team have had to do to make this system work, right? The third example, right, looks like the best. It's a clean three-tier deployment of a bus, but the second-tier bus is showing up to a second-tier school late. So unless that, if that third-tier run was any longer than it is, it would have difficulty getting out and doing that third-tier run on time, and there's a number of examples in the system where that is exactly the case. We talk about these domino delays, okay? All right, so I paused there, and I wanted to cover that in some depth, because that's the nature of the challenge that we're facing. So the possibilities on a bell time front, you know, efficiency and effectiveness are all about how much work time you provide to the buses to be able to complete their runs. The more time you have, the longer the runs can be, the more students you can put on the bus, right? The shorter the amount of time, the less so. Right now, you are in a great position in that you have more or less common length of instructional day, right, which decreases the problem between the morning and the afternoon. You have a relatively even 45-minute spread between the tiers, okay? So what do we do about increasing the amount of work time? Well, we have to change the bells if we want to increase the work time, possibly by spreading the ends out some more, right? Or alternatively, we can add resources, right? For the same number of buses, the more work time you provide, the more students that you can transport. If you add buses, you can shorten the runs, right, which is both a service quality gain by making the ride time shorter, right, and making it more effective in terms of eliminating those double runs perhaps in the third tier, but obviously it adds cost, right, which starts eroding that great picture of efficiency that I showed you, right? So the bell times are a huge, not issue, but a huge consideration for this board, and something that you will see in our more detailed recommendations, something that we think you should take another look at. Okay. So what is that path forward? Well, it's really, there's a pressure for change. We, you know, the boiling frog example really came to a head with the startup in 2019. It wasn't a result of anyone failing, it wasn't a result of any one thing that happened, it was an accumulation of change where the system just couldn't fully adapt, and that's coming from the pressure of growth and ongoing growth in Stafford County. So we talk about geographic and demographic change, I think we can all agree that that's not going to slow down in Stafford County anytime soon. The lessons from the 2019 startup for us is, I mean, it's really straightforward, you know, a system works until it doesn't, right? When you have this situation where you have an accumulation of small-scale change, pressure building over time, it tends to fly under the radar and not be noticed until some precipitating event causes a tipping point. That's what the 2019 startup was all about. To us, the crisis was apparent, not real. It was a combination of issues, right? It was the bell time changes, the redistricting, it was a shortage of bus drivers, it was the design compromises that were made, it was all of those things, but when you break those things down into their component parts, none of them translated into an overall, you know, systemic failure. It was that they all came to a head at the same time. So from our perspective, what we have been encouraging Barry and the superintendent to do is think about this, is that a problem, or is that an opportunity? From where we're standing, and this is easy for us to say, right, because we go home at the end of the day, but from our perspective, having done this and seen this in a lot of different places, events like you had in the startup in 2019 can be translated into an opportunity to make things better, to make them systemically better, so that you don't have a repeat problem in future years, but also to make the underlying system stronger foundationally, and set it up for the next 20 years of success, as opposed to just trying to get back to a baseline of normal. So that's where we are coming from in terms of our specific path-forward recommendations. There's five of them, and we phrase these as decision points, because that's really what they are. That's really what we are all about, is we don't think that you pay us just to tell you what is wrong and what you should do, but hopefully to show the path forward and to encourage the hard decisions that we think need to be made. The first one is the policy and procedure question again, policies, regulations, and procedures. Our recommendation is that this board make a decision, make a hard decision to proceed forward to rewrite the policies, which will then lead to a rewrite of the regulations and a rewrite of the supporting procedures at the departmental level. This is so important to us, because it's not only a foundational element, and policies are great reference tools, they're not generally something that's referred to every day, just like a standard operating procedure is not, but it's the process of change, it's the process of... the process of going through and forcing yourself to think about the system and what you want this system to be so that you translate it into policy. That's where the real value is, and that's why we think it can be such an important lever for change throughout the system, okay? Secondly, on the bell times. Here, our recommendation is that this board make a decision to study, not to make any changes yet, because it is so impactful and we recognize all of the work that went into setting up the bell times for, for the start of last year. We're not making any firm recommendation for change, but we hope what you see from what I showed you on those few slides is where the systemic constraints are, and if those systemic constraints are not dealt with, you're, you're going to be setting yourself up for, for, for longer-term failure. This is an important subject. We didn't do a deep enough analysis to tell you what the bell time should be. Those decisions are your decisions to make, they need to be supported by the experts who can, who can tell you what the transportation implications are going to be. So what we're recommending here is that you make a hard decision to proceed forward and relook at the bell times and see what might be done to take some of those constraints and, and soften them. Thirdly, technology advancement. And again, I'll, I'll, I'll give my due to my colleague Barry. We don't know exactly what this means. Our observation is that technology integration is really what we think the focus ought to be. You've made big investments in excellent technology, integrating that technology into the operation and making sure it's all interoperable and working together is really the thrust of where we're coming from. The specifics of that is not something that was within the scope of this study, but something that we think really all that's required initially is a commitment of some initial staff work to define what that means at a level that is then actionable on the part of the superintendent and this board. Again, that's easy to say, that's not easy to do because it's a commitment, right? It's a commitment of time and energy and effort to do it, but we believe it should explicitly become part of, of the mandate going forward. All right. Fourth, organizational changes. I don't believe this board needs to take any action at this point. I do believe that the superintendent should enable this process to proceed, and again, it's, it's a recommendation to decide to study because the organizational changes are derivative in, in our view. It all depends, again, on, on what are the expectations that are going to be set by this board in policy? What is the technology going to be? How big is that fleet going to be? Then we, then we optimize the organization to those requirements, not the other way around. But one should inform the other, so beginning this process now so that it moves in parallel with those other initiatives is something that we think is important, that you don't wait till the end to think about the organizational implications of some of the other decisions that you're making. And then finally, this is something that I probably should have paused on and talked about a little bit more when we talked about the detail of the work that we did. Your cohort of bus drivers are the most important cohort in the Transportation Department. Nothing happens without them. They are important, they are on the front lines, they deal with everything day-to-day, and we need to support them. What we're talking about here, though, is the constraints imposed with, by the way you compensate them, and I don't mean how much you compensate them, I mean the contract structure that you have imposes a constraint on your flexibility to make adjustments to the system. I don't know where exactly to go with that, but the reason that these words are chosen carefully is because I don't want to leave you with the impression, anything other than that we understand how important and how valuable that cohort of bus drivers is, but we need to put our toes in the water and start thinking about the contract structure that we have, because that's one of those legacy items that goes way back in time and may no longer be fully appropriate to your needs. So the recommendation here, again, I don't think this board needs to take any action, but in parallel with that study of the organizational structure of the department, we believe that the superintendent should make a decision to form essentially a standing committee to work in parallel with all of the other initiatives, to say, "What does this mean to the drivers? How do we take care of them the right way to make sure that they are there for us doing the job that they've been doing so well for all of these years?" Okay? So that's it. I know I moved through that very, very quickly, and I apologize for how quickly we moved, but I did want to make sure that we left plenty of time for any questions that you may have.
All right. I'm going to open it up to board members for questions. Thank you very much for getting through all of them and leaving time for, for discussion. Dr. Chase, do you want to start us? Thanks.
Yeah, first of all, no need to apologize for being fast. That was a really lovely presentation, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So just a couple little questions. One, you talked about, you know, the choice of bell schedules versus having a larger fleet, and I guess what, and, and just from, from your observations, I mean, what we've been told is that it's very difficult to even get bus drivers.
It is.
So I could buy a lot of buses.
Correct.
But I might not have anybody to drive them.
Correct.
Okay.
And I actually, and I'm glad you brought that up, but thank you, Dr. Chase, because it's one of those slides I kind of glossed over. There was a, a line in there that said, "If you have a 210-bus system, that means you have to have 210-bus drivers every day."
Right.
Right? To execute that system as designed. So even if the system design has some flaws in it, it gets only worse if you don't have enough drivers.
Right.
And that was a big part of the operational problems at the start of 2019.
Right.
I don't know what the pandemic's going to do. I believe it's going to make some pretty fundamental changes to the economics and the decision of people, so whether they want that very difficult job.
Right.
So we, at DSG, we don't think that the shortage is going to get any easier.
Right.
It's going to, going to get harder, so you're absolutely right. You can choose if you have, you know, buckets of money that you want to throw at the problem to buy a bunch of buses and say, "We'll solve the problem that way." But if you can't get drivers, you're not making any progress.
Just need more buckets of money, yeah.
More buckets of money, right.
And then you talk about policy changes, and that's a little abstract for me. Can you give me an example of, of a policy change that we might ought to be considering?
Sure. Some of it is, and again, thank you for the question, because it's not so much a policy change as it is a policy expansion.
Okay.
Now, what do I mean by that? Your policy language is light, doesn't cover a lot of things. It doesn't cover, in our view, a lot of sort of the fundamental constraints that go into making a system work, right? So it starts with who, who gets a ride, right? Your policy absolutely addresses that, right? But what does that ride look like? How long are they allowed to be on the bus? How many kids can you put per seat, which is a huge subject these days with, with COVID, right? But it extends beyond that, extends to how early can they get to school? When can we drop them off? How quickly do the buses leave after the day is over, right? So there's a host of sort of trickle-down constraints, not all of which, in our view, measure up to the level of board policy, right? Some of which do, and in all cases, you should be defining those expectations and leave it to the experts to define how they're going to get there. That's where the regulations and, and the procedures come in.
And is there a school system that you have been particularly impressed with their policy that we could perhaps crib off of?
Yes. Yeah, in, in fact, I believe I gave very simple examples in one of the presentations that we did. We have stacks of, of samples that I, I could provide to Barry as places to start, but, but I caution you, there's a big risk in just saying, "Oh, that looks good," and thinking it applies here. The, again, the value is the process, not the result, in our view, the biggest value, right? The process that forces you to think about what is it, what are the expectations that we want to set for this school system?
Great, thank you so much.
Sure.
All right. Anyone else? Dr. Wann, go ahead.
First of all, thank you. I appreciate not only the briefness of your summary, but also the effort that went into creating this document. You know, we have a, a large district, there's a lot of it that's rural, the roads aren't very good, they're narrow, single-lane. Those bus routes, I know, are much more difficult for the drivers to manage, and in many cases prevents them from doing multiple runs. So some of these solutions don't necessarily seem to be just policy, but in some cases they do seem to be actually additional resources, as, as opposed to just
Yes.
a policy change.
Correct.
Like the North Star, it's for an hour for our little kids to be on the bus is, it seems excessive, it seems like we maybe need to deploy a second, a second bus. One of the things that you said in this that I found really interesting, you were talking about, now if I can find my notes, the misaligned responsibilities in reporting, and we do recognize that Barry is wearing too many hats, and we've tried to fix that, but then COVID happened. The current structure enables influencers outside the organizational norms. What do you mean by that?
So what we found in the organization, can I address the, the first part real quick as well? I agree with everything you said, you know, policy is not a cure-all, it's not going to fix everything. And also, the policy has to be informed by the operational realities, which is why I encourage you in that process to rely on your operational experts. You, you may have an expectation that no rides are going to be longer than 30 minutes, and that just might be an operational impracticality in some instances, so it's, it's a back-and-forth process, okay? Back to the question on, on, on the influencers. So let me, without being at all specific, I will answer that by saying what we saw was a result of these evolutionary changes, where we, in a number of instances, have not made organizational positional changes, but we have implemented workarounds within the organization for different kinds of reporting, right, and different kinds of responsibilities that in some instances are not very well-aligned with the functional description of that position, and in some cases are split amongst multiple people, which gives the opportunity for, and I'm not saying there's a lot of people that do this, gives the opportunity for those so inclined to work one against the other, right, to, to get, get their way in, in certain instances. And, you know, we're not advocating for a military type of structure here, but logistics lends itself to order and discipline, right? In order for a logistical system to work, all of the pieces and parts have to do their, their piece of the puzzle, right? And if, if, if one doesn't, it's usually okay, if two doesn't, it's usually, it's usually okay, but if numbers of, of those pieces and parts are not working the right way, the whole system suffers. So that, that's where that was coming from. So what we're looking for is sort of a organizational reset, right? Do we have the right people in the right positions doing the right job?
Okay, yeah, good afternoon, thank you so much. I know, I know you mentioned "we" a lot, so I wasn't sure if you were referring to DSG or was this a collaboration with the school system?
Yeah, the whole process was absolutely a collaboration with the school system.
Yeah.
We can't do our work without so.
Because usually you would see the school system, you know, it only said DSG on here, so I was just wondering. Can you clarify for me a little bit, and maybe it's just me, the performance by the numbers?
Yes.
The daily runs per bus, you have 5.6, that's not for special needs also, is it?
It, it's the entire system combined, right? So a perfect three-tier system implies that a bus would do three runs in the morning and three in the afternoon, and it would be a 6.0 average. 5.6 is, is the average that shows that example that I was showing you, where not every bus can do six daily runs. Sometimes it's only five, sometimes it's only four, and in some cases, it's more than six. So system-wide, the average is 5.6, which I will tell you for a, for a nominal three-tier system is excellent.
The other question that I had, I believe that prior to approving the study, I think I mentioned, and I asked for an analysis of the routes, and this is not you, if you did not, if it was out of scope for you, but I did ask for an analysis of the routes that we currently have to see if they would, could be shortened, or, you know, depending on what they were, could they be better to reduce the, the length, so that, to reduce the double, you know, going back and forth? Did we do that? Because I, I didn't see that in the study at all.
That's a level of granularity that was impossible to get to with the scope of work. I will tell you, I will answer the, can't, answer the question generally, that we did look at, at the bus routes to look for gross problems with the length and the efficiency. That's what these numbers summarize. We didn't just look at the averages, we also drilled down and looked at the routes themselves. And I haven't met a system yet that can't be improved when it comes to individual bus routes, right? But the general assessment is that the routes are very efficiently designed.
Okay, if that's the case, then...
So that, that doesn't mean that there's not routes out there that
Yeah.
operate with too few kids
Yeah.
or routes that are too long
Yeah.
or too short, right?
Yeah.
But overall.
Yeah, especially after we did the redistricting and Dr. Kizner came onboard.
Yeah, so let's...
He was able to identify one very important one.
Yeah, and Tom is, Tom is very kind. What, what I think he would also say is, "Your system needs a major reset." And you could fix one route here, you could fix one route there, but you're not fixing a problem, and if you fix a route, you're probably going to create another problem with other routes.
Yeah, I was not referring to one route, I was, I was looking at the whole system and I thought that that's why.
Right, and he looked at, when you see the entire report, there's going to be, there are recommendations for a drastic revisit on how we're doing business, and, and part of that will look at your route efficiencies.
Thank you very much, because that, I'm very interested in that, simply that we found that, that you have addressed early when you came onboard, there was like 40 kids in an area where they were supposed to be going somewhere, so that's where I would like to, you know, the second tier or your granularity assessment to engage in, so yeah, thank you very much.
Any questions? Ms. Healy?
This is just an observation more than a question. I, I think you've really done a good job of identifying where we need to move forward because I've seen over the years an amazing effort made on the part of transportation to meet our needs, and a lot of it is, is putting out fires. And sort of like the volunteer fire department, sometimes you don't have enough. And we have managers, supervisors in transportation driving buses to, you know, to help us out. So I, I think if we can work on these policies, look at the organization, and of course, do it in, in conjunction with transportation, because they're the ones that know what needs to be done, they know, you know, the resources, they know, you know, where, where we should move to go forward, that this could only enhance our system. Because we have very loyal and dedicated drivers who at some point are going to be retiring, just like many of our, our veteran teachers, they're reaching the age where they can, you know, move on to another step in, in their lives. So I'm, I'm looking forward to this board and the superintendent, you know, looking at this and, and making some enhancements to our system. But on, on the same vein, I, I want to say that I'm, I'm so grateful for our transportation and what they've done with the resources, not just this year, but, but in past years, and, and we are, in my opinion, blessed to have Mr. Suddath and, and his team, you know, working for our community. I mean, we all get complaints, particularly at the beginning of the school year, although I must say this was an exception, about the buses being late, and I'd always tell people, "Well, just, you know, give it a couple weeks because, you know, we have to, you know, get things ironed out." So, you know, I, I, I think we have a, a great team there and a great staff, and, and what you're suggesting here and the observations
it that much more effective because there was transparency throughout and a welcoming attitude to this whole study.
Any other questions? I have a, oops, a couple comments. First, again, thank you for this study. It seems like the recommendations are things that should be being done, not in isolation, that they can be done together, moving as a, as a group forward that then we would get, I mean, or is there a particular recommendation that you think has to come first?
I don't think there's any question that there's a sequence to it.
I wondered.
But it's absolutely an overlapping sequence, and if you follow the decisions one through five, that's your sequence.
Okay.
And the decision brief, the more, the written document that we provided back in March speaks exactly to the overlap and what should come first and what that timing should look like. Now, obviously, the timing is off now because we've lost seven months, but I will say that you have a wonderful opportunity here with this school year, given that it's just, it's not going to be normal, right? But it gives us an opportunity to do a lot of this work in the context of what's going on this year. But I would point you to that, to that March document because we speak to that overlap and to that sequencing. Directly, I will answer your question by saying it has to start with the policy piece because everything builds from that.
And then the other question I had in general about the study that you all did, we call it the transportation audit. Was this mostly focused on routing or was there also an examination? Because I haven't seen much talked about the fleet management, the safety, the maintenance, and that piece of it, and maybe that might be in your broader.
Yeah.
Were there any comments or anything in those regards? Because fleet management, I believe I understand correctly, is also shared with the county.
It is.
And so I would be interested personally on if there are recommendations in those areas, just getting that dialogue started, which I think is separate from potentially some of these processes.
Yeah, and it was separate from the scope that we had as well. It was a recognition that it's a shared service with the county, but I agree with you completely. It's an integral part of what we're talking about. That one, that one graphic showed that, right? The fleet is, you can't operate without the fleet. You can't operate without a reliable, safe, and effective fleet. It generally reflects 25 to 30% of your overall cost, so it's critical to the operation. It just wasn't specifically part of the scope of work.
Okay, because I mean, I do think that is something too, that as a board, we have to understand that piece because I understand if there are bottlenecks within being able to get buses in and out of facilities, things like that, that creates another layer of issues because we aren't going to. So I mean, I do think as we move forward, that piece may need, may need to just be broadly examined because if that even is a shared service and making sure that it's operating as.
Absolutely.
Let's see, efficiently, as, as some of this.
If you have the right number of drivers, but you don't have the right number of buses, you're in the same boat.
Well, or if they're down for maintenance, I think is the challenge.
Yeah.
And going forward, so.
I thought I read it in here, but maybe I'm mistaken. Was there security that came up? Because I know that was one of concerns of the bus drivers. Was that out of scope?
It did not specifically come up, no.
Okay.
We had, I don't want to sound like I'm making excuses, but, you know, we did have a limited scope, and we had to, we had to focus our efforts where, yeah.
Again, thank you so much for coming. I know it seems like there is at least some consensus about moving forward on these. I will, we can talk with Dr. Kizner on bringing forward how we want to bring that forward to the board, but it sounds like sooner rather than later is the, is the way to go and what part needs board action, but it seems like there's a lot of circles that need to be moving at the same time. Dr. Kizner, any, any comments from you in general?
I mean, what I would probably recommend for the board is honestly, give you time to read the report, have another work session, have Barry involved, and maybe we could lay out a plan of action by, a sequential plan of action with dates attached to it, and that might be the best way to go forward.
So there'll be an additional document we'll receive tonight besides this one, or is this, you just, this one is what you're talking about?
The report.
The whole report?
The whole report. I'm just going to get a copy of it.
The report in March.
From March, yeah.
We just, we, we'll get you all the.
I think so. I think March.
I can resend it if you need.
Yeah, yeah.
I think March sort of took a.
If you have electronic.
Took a hard right turn.
We'll get you a more depth report.
That would be great.
I think we could also get a copy of the policies?
Yeah.
That would be great.
Yes. Ms. Healy? Okay. All right. Thank you again so much for coming. We appreciate the work and hopefully working together more.
My pleasure.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. At this time, I'm going to adjourn the work session for everybody to take just a few minutes break, and then we'll try and get started as close to seven as we can. All right?
Yeah. I'll try.